Go.
All right, thank you. Regular board meeting, August 8, 2022 is in session. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda we invited to participate during that agenda item by the Board of Chair. Citizens may comment on items related to schools to business not appearing on this agenda during the public comments section of this meeting. Citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are intact at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement where appropriate, including if statements are out of order, too lengthy, breach of personal privacy rights, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize this is a trusty business meeting conducted in a public forum. With that, we'll say. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite. First of all, I'd like to welcome a new superintendent, Dr. Wisher, and our newest board member, Gretchen Knutkin. To our first meeting tonight. Okay, with that, we're going to the consent agenda, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second motion.
Game has been. The approved, the agenda has been approved. Okay, the approval of minutes of prior meeting, June 13. Just go one at a time, I guess. June 13.
Does want me?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve that one, 1613.
I'm waiting for the million other ones there, sorry. Took a while to open the computer. So long ago, too. I will second that motion, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, go on to the June 16 meeting.
Make a motion. To approve the 1 on 616.
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Post. So they. We have a fair proof. The next one is what the June 28 meeting.
And I'll make a motion to approve that one, too.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Post. Minutes for June 28. Okay, the district substitute list.
That we don't have updated quite yet.
I think you, now we have the bills in front of us here. We have the. To see that $3,000 milk cooler. That was a grant that split near. So we got a new milk cooler on the ground.
Yep, so Heidi, the kitchen, the new kitchen manager started in September to put the grant up and was. Granted the cooler. And so we didn't get it until June, which is why we just paid it.
Right, that's cool.
BMO financial stuff, I know it's just like dollar amounts, is there any kind of breakdown of that BMO? That just must be a credit card, then that just pay off every month?
Yes.
And so then if you look for it, it'll say like food service, those are all the food service charges on that card. And then, you know, my card, each card is broken down there. You have this one step. Does this break it down farther than just that?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's the extended stop arm to cover buses over the summer.
No, that was the, the extended arm to stop sign that extends farther out on the side, so.
We did, but for each bus.
For each bus, okay.
Yeah, so that's, so that was our portion of the buses that we contract.
So people have to actually hit it to go around the buses like they always do. I like it.
So that, how many buses do we run? Five, four, five. Yeah, I think so. How many buses do we run?
Seven, eight?
We had eight or nine.
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 Wow.
So that's, that's an arm for each bus for that amount of money. It sounds so bad.
And then there's the bus that we.
Yeah.
We didn't have to do that one because it doesn't do stops.
It didn't.
The activity bus, it goes from here to, okay, so it's not a route.
Glad to see it on there. Did they use those to be in the last year? Or would they be the extended arms?
So the thing they were installed. Maybe April, May? I think it's when they were installed.
So they were relatively new start.
Yeah, they had to be installed by the summer.
Yeah.
Side by side educational consulting.
So that's for the CSPD that we're just the fiscal hopes for.
Oh. Thank you.
The chrome books and cards.
We ordered those a while ago, I just took, you guys approved them at the previous meeting.
It says, was that your finds of those?
Yeah, that's right. That's the new math thing, that right?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve. For June and July bills.
I will second it.
All in favor? All right, I supposed. So they've been approved. All right, do we have any, any? Buddy wanting to speak? Okay, so none. The West Valley Parent Teachers Association, any report? None, Stephanie?
I've not heard anything over the summer.
Okay, all right. West Valley Teachers Organization. Just like.
Here, here in present.
In summer mode.
Yeah.
Good to see you here. All right, principals report.
I can jump in.
All right.
We just recently returned from a conference in Helen. Based on the science of reading. The elementary, we had, including myself, 10 people who were able to go. So it was pretty well attended. We had representation from at least one from every grade level, sometimes two, and even sped. So that's, that's a really good get, and it had some pretty amazing speakers there. Anita Archer was the keynote speaker. So she's a pretty big deal in education. Got to hear from former, I guess, like would be the main curriculum coordinator for Chicago Public Schools. Kind of talked about some of the ways that they determined how to do curriculum and gave some advice on that, so. Overall, it was a pretty amazing conference. It was attended by hundreds and hundreds of people with a state, so it was a good way to connect with other people in the profession. And it's been so long since we've been able to do anything like that, you know, because of COVID and stuff, so it was, it was exciting. The other thing to touch on, too, is we're right now all staffed and ready to go for next year. Got some new faces joining us. We've got a new PE teacher, Joel Always, who's joining us. Anita Hillis will join us for music. We've got a new sped teacher, Megan Malia, who's going to join us in the elementary. She was the one, I'm not sure if you're remembering, when she couldn't come because of housing and then she ended up finding it out. So we kind of just waited on that a little bit before jumping into somebody else. She'll be a great fit. Yeah, Kat Cuchara, of course, I'm sure you're all familiar with her, district wide tech. And yeah, we're excited to get going. The elementary leadership team this year will focus on going back to our core documents that we were developing with Ashoke and Ignite Nation. Prior to his unfortunate perceived death and COVID. We kind of got away from those a little bit, just due to the circumstances of trying to do school. And so you'll, you'll hear things like a compact for excellence, our shared beliefs, the warrior way. As we move forward with that and going back to best self, best work, types of things. My focus this year is going to be on teacher efficacy and communication between teams. Because I feel like that's so important and oftentimes I feel like we take it for granted, but being very purposeful about meetings and what they should be about. Kind of learned some of that at the conference, too, so I'm excited for that. Tanya and I were able to sit down together and kind of develop a game plan for how we're going to do that with PLCs this year. And do some of the broad work with that. So just kind of how important teams are in communicating together and how it definitely improves student growth. One of the researchers there gave a, there's a scale that they use for student growth effectiveness, and it ranges from like negative point five to about 1.5. And things like homework are, you know, somewhere around zero, how they improve, you know, things like that.
Sounds punitive. Right, either get a negative or you're perfect, a plus point five.
Exactly. And so it's a teacher collaboration, purposeful planning and communication was 1.4. So it was almost like as best as you could do. So anyway, that's where we are in the elementary and we're getting new staff in barely soon to do a new teacher orientation. Kat and I just walked around today doing phones, because there's been a lot of movement. So even just knowing where people are going to be in the building. We still have a couple of question marks on some support staff from the co-op and where they're going to land, like speech in the elementary and school site, but we're getting closer to that, so.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, I do have to step out.
Well, thank you for all the working and stuff up, and I know that's not been easy, interviewing everybody and making decisions and appreciate all that.
It's a huge thing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great rest.
And well, we have also hired in a middle school, I'm not going to go through all of them right now. I think that we went through them as they came along. One change is that we did end up, we had Wendy Alvarez, who would be a reading teacher at the middle school. And instead, she's going to do seventh grade ELA and literature. So she'll be there, I'm still hired to the middle school and, but just pairing that for now to that level that will have her there with the ELA and then find different ways to cover the literature classes. So we ended up having Laura Browning, who is new to us at social studies, will teach one group of seventh grade literature. And then Chris Keller, who works in the library now, came to us from Smith Valley. He does, part of his contract is middle school electives. So he will take current events and Warrior Hour from Laura Browning. So we just did some slides. So it's the same people that you've approved previously, but we did some slides there. So I feel like we have a good team at this point and we've been working together. And the English team has been working together and helping Wendy prepare and it's looking good right now. And the leadership team has met for the middle school and we're really working just on strengthening the academic program. Just how do we go back into that? And kind of like Richard said, where were we at before COVID? What were we doing? It's kind of like, okay, what were we doing? So in, in keeping in line with that, we've been working on keeping high behavioral and academic expectations schoolwide and utilizing the warrior way and the other tools that we had created before. And professional development around seeing the good in students and preventing and responding to misbehavior. So been working and studying. Terry and I, the behavioral coach and I have been reading, seeing the good in students and then sharing that out with our leadership team and some aspects of that blended with other past training. It's not, we don't want to be entirely new, but we'll be working through that and concentrating on that for the beginning of the year, just with the classroom compacts and the behavior matrix and incentives. And then the structure setup at the beginning of the year, just trying to get a really strong start that looks similar across the grade levels. And continuing with data teaming within the PLC model and extending data analysis across the grade levels and not only with the ELA and math teachers. So reading in the content area is a responsibility of all the teachers in the middle school and also falls in social studies and science. And math also falls out, out there, outside of the ELA and math. Those, the final sum of their learning should be spread across the middle school. So trying to bring in the teams, so they understand the data that we're looking at. So it just doesn't seem like someone else's job. It shouldn't just be the math teacher or the English teacher is responsible for that. So where we're at is we're going to spread that around and let everybody in on the secret of that data. So our measurable goals for the year are not set yet. And we haven't met in that way with Dr. Richer to go over some of the data from the past and goals of where, where we might want to go. But one thing that we do want to do is increase attendance in the middle school. So I think that some of the fallout that happens in their learning, if we just look at tier one, which is just the general classroom where general students, the bulk of them, is that the attendance is really poor overall. We have a lot of students who end up federally chronically absent is what it's called. And just try to reduce that. And our theme for the year is be there, which also has a little be here within the word there is the word here. We want them to be here, but also you know, some fun things with the friends theme and things with the, you know, I'll be there for you, but having them be there for each other and just not missing out on the things that are happening here. I think it's easy for a teacher to say, when a kid is gone, we don't want them to feel bad and tell them, oh, you didn't miss anything. You know, it's okay, you didn't miss it. But really, that instruction that day was important. And, and there, any day that you miss is, you know, you've missed something, they did it, you weren't in attendance. And we'll balance that with the need, I know students need to stay home if they're ill, but just hoping to bring that attendance up and the engagement level of this course. A scheduling, the student schedules and classroom placements will be set later this week. I have not placed the students yet into their classes yet. And so we'll do that this week and be ready for the middle school roundup, which is August 24th from 2:00 to 6:00. So the middle school roundup, so far we have that on the, on the reader board out front. It's on the school website and we started a little run on Facebook on it. I think the PTO put it up, too. And we'll send something out to parents once the office is back. And at the roundup, students pick up their schedules, they can try out their lockers. And many of the teachers will be here, they can do walkthroughs, parents can walk through the schedules with them. I'll be here, it's possible that the counselor will be here and we can just answer any questions. And we don't change schedules that night. And parents may have seen the schedule ahead of time online because they have access to infinite campus, but we can take notes then and give them to the counselor to change it later. So, but we'll be here to take those notes, share those schedules and get the kids just in the building. They can load their lockers up if they want to and their classroom supplies. For that, and I think, I don't see, I mean, another big thing in middle school is just that football is starting. So I don't see the, the coaches here, the AD, but a lot of excitement around the football. Thank you.
Do we have any staff positions up in the middle school or are we at capacity?
We don't have any open, I, I imagine you're going to need a pair or two across the school. But once we get all the schedules done, the teaching placements are awful. Someone messaged me and thought there were two fifth grade positions open. Late in the game for that, no, everything is filled.
Thank you for that, too.
Did you have any particular one you were wondering?
No, I just was wondering if we were all, all good. Thank you very much for all that work.
Yeah, thank you.
Exciting.
They're all done.
Good job.
Thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, this is Dr. Wisher. So I have just a few little informational updates. First thing I wanted to mention, this was brought to your attention, I think at the previous board meeting, Better Lesson, which is a company that the district has used. Think the proposal that you saw last time was for $41,500. We had a $20,000 credit, so we have to modify this proposal down to $20,750. I met with Tina and Terry and we talked about how the, the program is actually used in the school. And what we are using the credit for is to purchase services that are actually used, knowing that if we need additional support through Better Lesson, that we can add that on later. So rather than buy it, have it sitting there and potentially not needed, we would rather just buy it more as a as-needed basis. So this uses up our credit and still provides the support that we actually need in the building. The next thing I wanted to mention is also at our August 15 meeting, the principals will have their handbooks ready. There were several things that were not included, there were policy updates that are recommended by the state and federally. That's included in every handbook every year. And it just took a little while to put all of that into a format and then get it out to the principals. So that will have those policy updates and then you guys will have that at the next meeting. Um, and one of the things, I think it may be on, it is, it's on the informational section, but I will go ahead and mention, and I printed this out for y'all. This is from Secure Education Consultants. You may have seen this mentioned around and about. So this is a company that does on-site security, safety assessments. They review all of our documents, they'll meet with staff members, they'll do a physical walkthrough of the campus. What I understand, it's pretty thorough and then they kind of give us a report out from a security standpoint. What we're doing well and I'm sure what we could probably improve on. It's $2,000, which I don't think is a huge price tag for that type of assessment. So this is something that I will be setting up. Once we get the results back, then I'll bring that to the board so that you know what the consultants have to say about our security. Myself being new, it's, I don't, it's one of the areas that I'm just not in order with yet, just haven't been here to see things in action. So this is one of the things that we'll do to address building security. And another thing, once school gets started, I like to have local emergency response agencies come in for our drills at least once. Fire department here for fire drills, police department here for lockdown or other types of security drills. For a couple of reasons, one, if we were to have an incident, those would be the people who would respond and we want them to be somewhat familiar with our building and our campus. Another thing, and this is, I had found most useful in other positions or other campuses, is they see things that we don't see as educators. We're looking at our students and we're looking at our, are they being compliant? Are they quiet? Are we getting from point A to point C? A police officer comes in and they see where a door isn't getting locked. Or maybe there's a better route. They just have such a different perspective because they're not looking at the same thing as we are. So they also provide really good feedback. And they also, they're able to look and say, well, how would, how would we get into the building? So drills are good for everyone, not just the kids and the teachers. Another thing along the lines of safety. So I, I've worked in other districts and other campuses and, and every place that I've been, the number one thing that is consistently mentioned is what stops an active shooter is a locked door. People in the state of mind that they're in, most often, if they go to a door and it's locked, they keep going. One of the things that I asked coming here to build is how did the teachers lock the doors? And keep that most of the classrooms, it has, the teacher has to have, these are her keys. Go into the hallway, put the key at the door, lock it, make sure you've turned it the right way. Get the key back out and go back into the room and close the door and secure the children. And whereas those. And whereas those are steps that we take pretty much every day. If we were to have that situation, considering the emotional stress that would be occurring. I think it's, it's, it's a hazard to have someone have to go out to the hallway to lock a door. So someone much smarter than me. Is then a D four guys. So these are lockdown magnets. And I would head them all set so that I could show them to you because I'm not very good at describing what they do. Also got on the internet, a little picture. So if you want to look at these and see how they work in an actual door after the meeting, I can show you that. But it's a magnet that costs about a dollar thirty-eight a piece on Amazon. It costs between two hundred, two hundred fifty dollars to change out all of the doors to push button locks. So this is for the time being a much more cost-effective way of quickly securing classrooms. So the way the magnet works is the teacher locks her classroom, locks the door. You put this over the, the plate on the inside of the door frame. And whenever you close the door, the door just stays closed hopefully at this level. But it's locked, but because it can't go into the little skip plate, the door just opens and closes. If you have a lockdown, you pull your magnet and you close your door and it's locked. There's no getting keys out. There's no making sure you've got the right set of keys and you turn the key the right direction. You just pull your magnet out, stick it on your door frame. And that's it. And there's no worrying about, you know, when kids go to the bathroom, they'll get locked out of the room and, and all this and that. So it's a pretty simple solution. And as I said, I think it's much more cost-effective right now. So this is something that we'll be getting and adding to some of our security measures.
Um, how much did you say it was to build the door locks?
I asked Phil, he's, that was my first day here. He said something around two hundred to two hundred fifty dollars to replace the, the handle mechanism, so like a push button.
Per door?
Per door, okay, per door. Yes. So it's something that if we wanted to consider kind of a long-term project where maybe every summer we replace three or four doors or four handles. That could be consideration and eventually get it to that point where we have better locks on all of the doors. It's not something, I, I think it would be too costly, especially when we have some of this work. I've used this in other schools until we were able to upgrade our doors. But that might be something that we look at as a, a long-term project is replacing those, those door locks.
We have, we have just a whole lot of doors. We don't know exact number, but it's like two hundred.
Right. And I'm not sure if they're all the same with, with all of the additions and some of the doors may be different, but that's something that will, will work on us. So, so we're.
On that note, I know whenever we had done our walkthrough, some of the teachers had brought up, it would be nice to be able to have keys to get into all the doors. And if somebody came in and they need to put students in another classroom or something. I mean, I don't know if that's something that has been brought up too, but.
We can look into that. You also, the more keys you have, the more accessible your building is. So.
I think it was within though, like the classrooms.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's, we are having or will have regular safety council meetings this year. And I think that's something that between the safety council meetings and then the principals talking to their leadership teams. Kind of discuss amongst the teachers what they feel is effective and what they need. But also still keeping the building overall secure and not having lots of key stuff about. The next thing. I will wait on this just a little bit. It's also in your informational section. Uh, wanted to give an update on the shift because not a lot of progress has been made. The construction company, because that is being done based on volunteer time. They just haven't had a lot of people coming forward to do the work. So it is kind of slowed down a little bit. Phil did come by today and let me know that there are plenty to be here Wednesday to start putting the walls in. So they're, they're working on it. It's just when someone wants to do something for free, they're we're not at the top of their priority list. There are other things going on right now that I need Phil focusing on. And hopefully we'll be able to get his attention on this to kind of make you feel with some of the gaps. We'll be having the parking lot and surfaces resealed and resurfaced here since everything will look freshened up out front. That's part of just the annual facilities upkeep. You may have noticed the playground is going in at the back right now. That's taking up most of bill until next time. Because it's taking a lot of concrete to anchor all of those pieces into ground. And as the principals mentioned earlier, we are having any teacher orientation next week. With the new staff, our mentor teachers, Kat is going to come in to, to work with them on technology. Brooke is going to come and help them follow their entire paperwork. And kind of help them get settled into the school for the year. And then they'll have ongoing support throughout the year with the mentor system, which we're going to be looking at. Evaluating it and hopefully expanding it to be more supportive of at a minimum first and second year teachers and then potentially third year teachers that still kind of want a little bit of help. A couple of weeks ago, I sent out a Google form survey to all of the staff and just asked for feedback. Asked pretty general questions, you know, what, what do you, what's great about West Valley? What could you stop updating? Um, what are you most concerned about? And the two most consistent responses that I've gotten are people are very concerned about the capacity of the building, which we're all very aware of that, that there are more bodies than what there is space for. And there is just a general concern over change. And, um, part of the concern with change is that it's a new year. Every new school year brings change and that's, that's normal. But there's also change in me being in the position and there's also change with the board members. So, um, for my purposes, I, I don't have a lot of change initiatives for the school year. Because I feel like for one, if it's not broke, we don't need to fix it. So I want to spend time observing, talking to people, asking questions and learning as much as I can to see what, what, what do we need as a school district to be the best that we can be for our, our students. The three areas that right now I know will require the most attention. One is we will be bringing back a more consistent system of using purchase orders before making purchases. And setting department budgets a little bit more rigidly. And, um, just being a little bit more accountable to how spending is being done in the district. And then the second thing is communication within the school district and also outside of the school district. And letting, um, parents and community members know about how we're spending money. How, what type of curriculum we're using in the school, what types of activities are going on. I've talked to the principals about, you know, we, we need to tell our story. We need to be visible as much as possible for a lot of reasons. One, I think parents deserve it. I don't, I think parents should feel confident that they're sending their kids to school and their kids are safe and learning the things that they should learn. The other is thinking long-term. When it comes time to request another bond. And that time will come. I want people to know what happens in West Valley. And I feel like if, if people know what's happening here, then we're more likely to have better support at that time. Because there won't be the question of what am I, what am I voting to raise my taxes for? And then that's kind of my third thing is trying to have more community outreach. Having more opportunities for community members and parents to be in the school during the school day and participate in activities. And then also having extra activities outside of school hours to bring parents in and celebrate their students and see what's going on here. So those, those are kind of my three areas right now is, is the finances, communication and community.
Um, is this SEC, is this the same thing that we had both that it was at one of the meetings? Is this the same company?
I think you brought it up last, was it May?
Yeah. I don't think Calispel Schools are doing it.
There's several schools in the valley that are.
There's a list here.
Do you have this set then?
I haven't yet. I get a lot of emails already of people wanting me to buy things. So I'm, I'm kind of taking my time with all of them to evaluate, you know, is this, is, you know, is this a legitimate service? So I've been a little slow to respond just because it's, it's like as soon as my name hit the website, people. I think I own the checkbook and they're wanting me to buy things.
The, the, the papers said the districts that were involved with this SEC, the one we're looking at here were Evergreen, Calispel, Kynect, Troy, West Blasher, West Valley, Whitefish. Those are the ones that are going with this SEC.
And they must have, I think Cal had started the conversation and that's where they got, uh, West Valley on the list. But I have not signed the contract yet and sent it in.
We're, we're body into it, but it apparently we're listed as one of the multiples of scheduled assessments through there. It says here, I mean, you can't depend on the paper. I'm just saying what was on the front page of the paper sent back.
I do remember this on one of the meetings.
We did, we did talk about it as a, as possibility of. And I noticed flathead electric, it, you know, they had that roundup for safety. And they gave ten thousand dollars to, okay, to SEC. To, and I don't know whether we're going to get part of that. They're rewarding ten thousand dollars seed money to schools that are involved with SEC. So maybe we need, I don't know how we'd go about getting our hands on part of that. But it sounds like, um, sun electric is gonna go part of that. And they specified that SEC would just, that, um, Secure Education Consultants or whatever. That's one we can look at now. So. Oh, it's just in the paper. Who knows? Just, that's what, that's public perception. So it's a good idea to see what they're saying. Anyway, those are just information items for this, for Dr. Richard when she gets talking with. Anything else with the superintendent's report? All right, go on to the action items. Uh, consideration of rescheduling the budget meeting due August fifteenth. All right, because I think that society could address this. We intended maybe to have the budget meeting be in conjunction with this one, but turned out we didn't quite get there. So.
Be a few more days to finish everything up.
And I think we can come up, if we can come up with a forum on the fifteenth at five thirty, we'll have that budget meeting at that time.
I'll make a motion to reschedule it to August fifteenth. Is it the same time at five thirty?
I think so. Uh, no, I don't see any reason for it not to be five thirty on, on fifteenth. Okay. Anybody second that? Okay. Well, that means that we'll have a forum here. I think we're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
And I will be here.
We've mentioned, we talked about that. Yeah. But I, um, but Jeff sent an email this morning that he would be here. So we should have a forum without problem.
Yes, I may, Marilyn. It's a tight turnaround to get everything done that has to happen and get done in July. Once we get reports from the county. And then you're balancing your normal June books, but then you're turning around and you're, you're putting a nice bow, so to speak, on the, the trustee's financial summary that basically you're balancing every fund, you're showing every expenditure, every bit of revenue within there. It's very detailed and for a business official, that's when the nitty gritty happens is in the summertime to get that done. And then you can't start your new budget within May fairs till you've got your trustees reports done. So that you know what your fund balances are and how you're going to move forward, what your levies can be. What your proposals are for some of those permissive levies. And this being Cecilia's first year, she has, you have until, I want to say the twenty-second of August. Right in there, twenty-six.
I think we have to have a meeting by the twentieth and to the safety of the twenty-fifth.
Yeah. And so having this, doing it all by the eighth is a, it's, it's a pretty tough thing to, to pull off and especially when you're brand new. And so to be able to have that extra week for her to just focus now on finishing the TFS and then moving forward in that budget. And communicating and looking at which, what happened last year, maybe even two years ago, as far as some of these permissive levies. Is gonna, is gonna be a real benefit for her as well as your superintendent, the board, to know that it's complete and it's done right.
So we're doing the right thing by.
Yeah.
Putting this.
Yeah, for sure.
Do we need any more time than that?
Yeah.
Sounds like it's. I mean, I know we only have until the twenty-second, but if you would need a few extra. Well, if you need later in that week or whatever.
Fair week. And I know that was kind of a challenge for.
But that's so. I, I'd be, you know, and maybe when we have our meeting on the fifteenth, we may have to have another meeting later on in that week if it's a necessity for Cecilia to get.
No, I should be able to. I've been working with the county superintendent's office and getting help there. Comments and we.
Five thirty. All right. So.
I motioned Justin's second it. So I think we're taking a vote on it, right?
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? So we have a meeting to, for the budget. All right, the next consideration is resignation of Danielle Pugh, para-professional.
I don't, I mean, I. Do you need me to speak to that? Yeah. Sometimes the superintendent does because they wouldn't know that you weren't here yet. So Danielle, um, decided at the end of the year not to continue as a middle school para. So, um, she came here, they moved up from California. Anyway, she took the job for the year. It was great for her, but there's other job opportunities out there helping know the area. She did a great job. We would welcome her back if she ever came back.
Make a motion to accept her resignation for Danielle Pugh.
Seconded, all in favor? I opposed. Okay, resignation of Danielle Pugh. The, the next one, consideration of hiring Justin LaScala, eighth grade volleyball coach.
Who can address that? A resume or anything? Do you know anything? That is, um, an area that Terry and I have talked about from the athletic director's side of things that we need some cleaning up on is advertising and hiring of coaches. There's not a real clear system for that. Board policy provides for it, but it hasn't always. There's just inconsistency that, that needs to be tightened up a little bit on. Um, I think things were already put into motion for Justin. Before I came on, but that is, so you're asking for more information in the future. You'll have more information.
Meanwhile, should be okay, Justin.
Assuming nobody in the room has met him. Were you a part of his energy process, sir?
Did you know, I just know.
Did you know, I just know some from Terry as AD. I believe he was, is a parent and has volunteered and coached. But I don't have that information. Terry's not here to make the AD report, so. And. I just remember asking, you know, to work with my kids. So I just asked in, you know, what is the experience and what? Yeah, so I don't have any of the specifics. You do have your background check and everything in play before this person starts. Yeah, Terry has talked to him as far as going down with the superintendent's office to do that. I haven't heard if he has yet, but.
I always wondered if we should.
Yeah, maybe ask Terry, could be here for next week's meeting.
Yeah, that's, should we table this one? And I'm not real comfortable with. I mean, I'm sure he's a good guy, but this should be a good kind of a, kind of a trial for going forward that maybe we need a little bit more.
Make resumes. And once I guess they make it here, background checks and all that completed.
Sometimes they're just still being housed, but this doesn't sound like it was still being housed.
He's a, he's a parent. He's not a district employee.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's natural. Go ahead, Kim.
Did you say to wait until the background check comes to approve them? No, I just didn't know where it comes in this process. Like it would be good to know if it's done right away or where it's at exactly in the process.
It's often, it's most often done after you hire. If we wait, if we waited for those to come through, I mean, usually you say upon, upon that, that coming through clear or whatever. Usually when you say, you know, that, that final steps with Cecilia coming and being actually be here with students, usually comes with that, you know, on a condition that that is accrued, right? You might start and be with other adults that cannot be alone with kids. It could be an employee not be alone with kids, you've approved them. But if that came through not clear or if there was someone who done something on there, you know, but.
I think it'd be nice to just have more information about him and have Terry come and talk, talk to us about why she elected that choice and, yeah, if she can make it here for the next meeting, I think it'd be appropriate. So I'll make a motion to table the hiring of Justin LaScala, Last Cowal, to the meeting on August 15th.
Or perhaps to the meeting in September. No, too late. Athletics start, athletics will be up and running.
Yeah, we can have, I think.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a lot of time on this.
Okay.
Yeah, it starts about the same time football does, if not a couple of days before.
I'll second it.
And we'll just second it, but we table this, Justin LaScala's hiring until we can discuss it at the next meeting on August 15th. All in favor?
I.
I.
And if Terry can't make the meeting, maybe we can ask her just to type up a summary about him, would be helpful to.
Yeah. If we talk, maybe we can talk to Terry and see if she, if she won't do it.
Sure, I'll reach out.
Thank you. Thank you, that'd be good, let them know. Because we're gonna have to have more information at the next meeting. Or we'll be moving out right now. Okay, so, good. All right, next one, consideration of the Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch, which is.
This is the one that.
Altocare.
Yes, the place in Altocare. You approved it, I believe in May or June. Yes, it's the contract with Medicaid for the billing portion of it. So it's just a separate contract for billing through.
Oh, that.
That one, yes, so they do the Medicaid billing, but this is the agreement that we send the money to the state. The state processes that they send Medicaid, Medicaid sends it back to us. So that's what.
And it's just now, if we, now we see it as Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch, it used to be Altocare.
And that, this contract is.
The same idea. Okay. So. I guess that, what are we doing, we're allowing.
I think it's basically just an agreement of payment.
For a grant, yeah.
Switching from Altocare to the Yellowstone.
Transfer. To Yellowstone.
Allow transfer funds to the Yellowstone Boys and Girls. For services, right?
Find out to come, so. I'll make a motion to approve the Yellowstone Boys and Girls Ranch contract that is actually titled State of Montana Intergovernmental Agreement for the Transfer of Monies to the State.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay. The next thing is the consideration of the resolution to sell the 1998 Bluebird bus. Are we gonna do that separate from the van? So let's take them separate, shall we?
No. Do them together.
That we have information here as to model disposal of property resolution. Talks about, it has found that 1998 Bluebird is absolute, obsolete, undesirable and unsuitable.
Language, it's been that way forever.
That was a lawyer thing years ago.
It's not been, or a trustee should place the following real property on the open market, advertise real property as being for sale and sell the same if the qualified buyer makes acceptable. Okay, so. And I think, and this, I don't know, we should dig up something to say about that.
So the, we need the bus, however, this bus has become more, more expensive to fixing it than it would be to sell it and replace it. So we have one of the funds in the district is a bus depreciation fund and there's about $22,000 in it. The only thing we can spend that money on is public. So we've kind of did some little internet searching and we've got a couple of books kind of looking around. What we would like to do is sell the bus, also the, the van, which is, will be the next item. It is currently inoperable. Someone has cut the fuel line on it and got all the gas out of the tank. And I can't remember, but it may also be missing the catalytic converter as well. Is it parked out here then? It's parked out here.
It was when this stuff happened.
Yes. So also, even when it is operable, it is, from what I understand, a hazard during the wintertime because it is a front wheel drive and often it's a little difficult to drive in the snow and ice. So what I would like to do is sell both of those and then look for, first priority would be a standard size bus, so something used but newer than what we have and much better condition to have as our activity bus. And then depending on funds available after that, try to find a four-wheel drive passenger van. Because when we have things that maybe it's just five or six kids, it's a Bay of Club or Honor Society or, you know, some small group of kids. That's a handful of students to put on a large bus and the fuel and you have to have CDL to drive the bus and the wear and tear, whereas a passenger van, any of us can drive the passenger van, it's less wear and tear. And we can still meet the needs of our students. So if we can't find a passenger van, then maybe looking at a large SUV, something that we can send smaller groups of kids out and do things that they need to do without running the big bus, but then we still have the big bus for the big troops. I talked to Bill with Treasure State Transportation. He said, he's one of the people who's kind of hopefully looking for potentially a bus for us. But he said in the meantime that we can work out some type of lease agreement to cover our activity needs. So once we've gotten rid of this, we'll still have access to something to get our kids where we need to get them to. But the first step is to help this property so that we can, getting something better and more appropriate for our needs.
The $22,000 that's aside for us, could we use that to buy the little van or whatever? We need, can we use that too? What does that go specifically for a big bus?
From what I understand, it, it's for student transportation.
So we can use it to both, we need to.
It can only replace an existing bus, we can't use it to purchase a second bus.
But we, but we, but if we use it to replace the, the little van, it would be okay.
You'd have to refer, you'd have to be looking at that as an e-bus, which is how we got that expedition that's out there, is that it's an e-bus and it's one that fits under the parameters of OPI that you can use your transportation fund with that. And, but it would run a route like your kids that go to day treatment or maybe to preschool and that kind of thing. That's what e-bus falls under. And so you could, you could look at that other, if it's gonna fall under e-bus.
Do we need both of those? Do we need our little bus we have now that hauls kids over to Evergreen and another?
Yes, sorry.
With the, you know, with the Special Olympians going to the mountain. At the same time, we have a route that goes every day to Glacier High School to bring the geometry students back. Situations like that where we need more than just the e-bus that we have right now. What type of vehicle is that? I call it the Escalade. It's an expedition, I always call the Escalade.
When that Ford van was first purchased, it was for our food services program because we were still running over to Evergreen to get our lunches at, at noon time. And so we needed something that was big, that could accommodate all the crates and food and everything that we transported. And then it, through the years, has just kind of evolved and we've been able to use it for a lot of other things, including maintenance.
But, but right now it doesn't have a, a route right now, a regular route like the, like the expedition has a regular route. It has a scheduled route. The drivers have to have certain qualifications in order to drive on during the route time.
And it's an everyday thing.
But then that, that expedition can be used by staff members if they were to go to a workshop or something or if you had to make a run into town for something, you just have to take the school bus signs off to when you're driving it for other uses.
As long as it wasn't in, as long as they weren't using it for something else. You could just use it in between times.
Right, yeah.
Right, so like the teachers who went to Helena. If they didn't want to take their own vehicle, since it was school business, they could have taken the expedition to go because it was a school conference.
Okay, I did a little bit of subject here, but it's all together, I guess. So what we need, I guess, is a resolution to sell the, the bus and the, the Ford van, the Ford E350 van, right? We need to have an okay to dispose that property.
I'll make a resolution to sell them both, the blue or bus and the van.
Yeah, on favor?
I.
I. Oh, now we get these. Consideration of certain, by reading of the new recommended policies. Once again, this is the recommended by MTSBA, the lawyers. Higher team, help us out with this stuff.
When these ones, this is when I was in youth and so I kind of went off with the numbers that you guys were reading when we're approving them. Will you point that one? Maybe it was just, I'm not sure. Anyways, and so it was like six, eight, 10, 12, 13. So I hope I got them right, this might be a duplicate on one of them, but hopefully.
It was my fault, I read a lot of numbers for you, sorry.
And I kept trying to go back. I think I caught a little bit. And I know last time we talked about having like a, somebody review, like doing like a committee and having somebody review these a little more in depth. It doesn't, they come up all throughout the school year.
Yeah, just in general, having a policy review committee.
Like having somebody separate, yeah.
A couple of board members and.
More on this.
Staff sit down together and go through them.
And then like be able to explain it to us at the meeting.
And so once the principals are back in full time, we can discuss that and discuss with their leadership teams, kind of who would be good tips for that and look at it format.
So we table these until we have the committee get together and, and analyze them for ambassadors.
Do you have to have these for like the handbook stuff?
Many of them were state related and once they came through the MTSBA, there, I could pull them back up again, but when I read through them, they're basically an expectation of schools. There wasn't much in there that was, I thought you riddled down to the few that were relevant to our school. And then you have, can I look at that one? I just wanna, I'm just gonna peek, you know, I'm just a guest. Look at this, is either something that had to be done at all? That's the, you know, I have the print offs of the I think a lot of them had to do with federal. And it's okay, I just remember that's the ones they kept were basic, were pretty much related to to Montana rule and to federal. There will be policies that come up that are, that if, if you adopt there, it's a change in your own school that you chose and that came to you. MTSBA tends, you know, they've broken these down ones. They're, they're seeing the laws that come through when the legis, legislations, latest sessions or the federal expectations on items. They, they key in there on those words that let you know, basically you're, you're adopting them and bringing them in, but they're, they're in law somewhere out there or in rule, you know, so.
And I guess that's what our policy has always been with these, is that if the MTSBA lawyers say that we should adopt these things and, and adapt our handbook this way that we should, just because they are lawyers and they know what they're doing. And now I guess that's, that was our, isn't that our usual way to look at these? And if we want to change that, we can, but we have to be careful what we change because we may be going against a law that we don't even have at hand, right?
And all these came from MTSBA, is that what you guys are saying?
All these came from FTSBA, right? And they got, what, how many lawyers, three, four, whatever.
Oh, they got more.
More than that.
They got, they're just on the phones.
When I read them, I didn't see something that was, was something that you're, you're just changing something for the sake of just changing it. And those will come along, sometimes just recommended policy that having that committee is good. Like what does that mean at our school?
Right.
How would we, how does that look here? But these ones were pretty much.
They're, I think they're pretty cut and dry. I would say too, another benefit of having a committee is a lot of times, I know as a teacher, I wasn't always aware of policy because someone in the classroom tall, but so much has changed. I think that it would be also helpful to have a committee of teachers who also goes back to teachers to communicate policy changes and updates. I know restraint and seclusion is a big topic across the country right now.
Right.
And it's something that we definitely want to make sure that we're being very mindful of.
This is your third meeting?
Student risk assessment. If I remember right, on the substitute thing, it had said something about the admin called on the substitute.
Yeah, it's been corrected. If you look underneath, um, lines thirty-four to thirty-six, they corrected that part where it's not admin now.
Cause I think that's why we tell them on this.
Yeah. Yeah, cause it was kind of a. I don't know, maybe a, a soft call of who could make the decision and who couldn't. And so this makes it a little bit more clear. I think we just cleaned up the language of thirty-four through thirty-six lines, thirty-four to thirty-six. If I remember right. That one's pretty straightforward and simple.
Yeah. I saw the first line and it said administration, so.
It just says wants the teachers, the individual teachers to get their own substitute.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
They have to go through the admin and can't get the right subs.
Well, in that way, they're already pre-approved substitutes and they're already been background checked and all. Nobody sneaks in that hasn't been gone through the vetting process, so.
Otherwise, I might wouldn't know for sure who's out there.
Well, when you guys have to approve the sub list every month, any conditions?
Which it says.
Which it says in here.
Which we, we do that. We've done that, but it just verifies what we've been doing right along. That's not changes, but just a little change.
Are we approving these all individually or do you wanna group them all together?
I think we should probably improve individually because some of them are, like the seclusion and restraint one, they have some issues. So I think we should go with each policy.
Wellness is the one that we basically deleted the entire policy and got rewritten. We'll make a motion to approve policy twenty-five ten, school wellness. Sorry if I read it ahead of time and.
I'll second it. I was fine with that.
Any discussion again that we've been discussing. I guess I have just have a question. It talks about establishing some kind of a committee that will need periodically to assess how we're doing with this, right? Are we gonna be establishing a committee on this?
This is regarding school wellness. We have a wellness committee.
Yeah, boy. So we'll, that just. We already have it, we could go. We just approved it, so we'll do that one. All right.
We had a vote on it.
Uh, yeah. Any more discussion? Okay, on favor?
Hi.
Hi. I didn't, anybody opposed? Substitutes, we talked about that.
I'll make a motion to approve a substitute policy fifty-three fourteen.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Colin opposed? Okay, thirty-three oh five, the seclusion and restraint.
You don't have any input on this?
Don't we should, did you have something about that one? I know it's an issue that the teacher should be trained.
Teachers are trained, from what I understand, we're CPI district, is that right?
Yes, a team of us. So we have the owl team. So, um, we used to do a different form of training. And now we do the CPA training. So special education teachers, some of the parents, the administrators are trained. It, it should a child need to be restrained in some way. Other people that haven't been through a training should never. Unless, unless somebody's, one student is endangering another or physically, you know, harming himself really.
You have good Samaritan laws that would protect people and the if. If, if there were a situation where someone were going to get hurt, if you did not put your hands on the student, if you put your hands on the student, you keep someone from getting hurt. When most of, of this, whenever we're talking about restraint, this is usually in a situation where you have a student who is dysregulated. And they are, they, they had escalated behaviorally. And these are situations that teachers, it's, it's fairly predictable that these students are gonna be. And that's why they, we have staff who works with those students most frequently are trained. Most of your, um, restraint, seclusion, whether it's CPI or right response. Most of the training focuses on de-escalation first and restraint as, as a last resort secondary, um, measure. And. As long as we have those people who are trained and their training is current, uh, I think CPI is still every two years. Is there a refresher for CPI?
Yes. A, a part that we recognized and we'll talk about this in our, when we meet with you is that in the past couple of years, we have an updated CPR here at the school. So I know there's a group going through for, that are, the bus drivers, e-bus drivers and things, but some of us that need the opportunity to go. As it's reading, has the CPR piece. Um, and then there should be something through our, our insurance company provides the videos. That we can train in-house and you can use those videos to train about a topic like this and make that available to all new employees. Doesn't train them to do the restraints, but it trains them about that situation when you call for assistance, when you're in a good Samaritan position.
The other situation that school districts get called on is not having good. Documentation and notification procedures. If we have a form for that, if not, I have a good template. So parents have to be notified, they have to be made aware that their child had to be either restrained or secluded. And that's documented and kept on file.
That's after the fact.
That's after the fact. And then also teams should meet after the fact to discuss what, what happened beforehand. So what, what could have been done proactively to have prevented a restraint to be necessary, what happened during the event, what happened afterwards? So, um, it becomes quite a process. It's not a matter of just. Holding a kid because they're angry. Um, there's a lot that goes into. Restrains.
And you, if you're in that type of situation, then you have to tend to the person that was there. The people have a risk of having a heart attack in the next twenty-four hours when you've been. A person in an event, like there's a lot in the training about that.
How many people in the school do we have that are trained that way?
Seven. Seven, I believe.
Not all of us.
From the office, from special education administrators, our professionals. I've only had to use something one time in my years here and that was literally two of us walking on each side of a student, one of us on each side. And, and helping, keeping our arms down, but making sure that they didn't fold to any direction and just staying with them is one technique we learned. I mean, we always think of it as an actual hold. There's different techniques. But you wanna, you wanna have some people on staff that have been through a more advanced training, should it be needed. If someone were to call us and, you know, on the all call and say they needed assistance. It would be interesting to see that, like the documentation. I know through special education, there's a process to document an event like that. If it would, a, a student that didn't have an IP, you know, it'd be interesting to make sure that we have a way to document. I like what you said about that. I don't know.
I, I think you use the same.
Besides just no.
Same procedures, whether it's a student with an IP or not, um, whenever it comes to a situation like that, because. Both are. That the student is gonna be protected under this policy essentially regardless of their special education status. We would go through the same process. It does say it's a goal that all new employees are trained in the area of student restraint and seclusion during their first week of employment. So maybe they're trying to get more people trained in that aspect.
In, in that element of training, it would be something through our insurance, just like we do bloodborne pathogens and other things. What do you do in this instance? And it's usually a training we could look through. I'm sure the insurance companies have something for that one. That, what, what to do in that type of situation. We don't train everybody on the specific holds and things. We don't want. Don't, everybody doesn't need it and everybody shouldn't really be in that position to do holds. But I'm sure there's trainings, if we look, who's, which insurance did you go with for schoolwide? You guys made a decision about that. Okay, and they, they usually would have videos that, that through our personnel office, there's a series of them that we should be watching and offering to those employees as they go through their orientation. So there's usually, um, bloodborne pathogens, bullying or harassment, Title IX. And then you would be adding. What thing with your needs.
Risk, uh, trips and falls, swim and trips and falls.
Yeah, ladders.
There's stuff for your food services in there as well.
And that's, that's how we do that. That's type of training. It's usually like through a, a video. We don't bring in a trainer or send them. The, the, I always get the CPI, the PCI, I get that mixed up, but that was, was the actual trainer that we go to them and spend the day with them.
Says here about identified designation locations for seclusion requirements? Is that just your office and Richard's office or do we have a designated area?
That, I, that would be the office and our other item would become the place of seclusion if we clear the room.
Right.
So sometimes we don't move the students, we move the other students if we had to, or that's, we could. And you would clear the room and now that location now becomes this because we don't have a specific, we don't have. A high needs population that we created a specific space for them where we know that's going to regularly occur and they will be in.
Unfortunately, this policy. Mandates that each school building for which students are present must have a building designated location. And I think it, it could be a specific office that people would leave in, that one adult would go in with the, the student, but we would have to have something at least designated.
So we could just identify that as the administrative or the health room, administrative offices or health room. We were.
Yeah, I just think after this, if policy is approved, then that would just have to be labeled appropriately.
Does it give specifications for a setting?
Safe and clean.
You know, I have a feeling that once these people come in here, the security people come in here, one of the aspects of the security that they are going to be addressing. Is mental health issues with students that are volatile. And I have a feeling that this is gonna be a question that will be, that will be brought up again.
So the only requirement is that it's safe and clean and allows space for an adult to be present the entire time and have continuous observation of the student. That's the only requirements.
So it could be the administrator's office, it could be the counselor's office.
It could be. I think we just have to designate it as all. Maybe we could have designations of multiple rooms that are potential uses.
Yes, and it's our, you know, I was just reading what seclusion is involuntary confinement in a room or other space during. Which a student is prevented from leaving or reasonably leaves it here. She can leave or be prevented from leaving through manual mechanically electronically locked doors that when closed cannot be opened from the inside. And does it say you have to have a seclusion room?
It does, if you read up on, above that on like sixteen through eighteen. So I think how we address that is through our documentation. Maybe that's like a checkbox type title where it have, you know, we have options. Classroom, principal's office, guidance counselor's office or other. And then we document it as incidents that occur.
Yep.
Those would be the most common locations where students would be located.
Rather than having a designated room.
Yeah, I don't think we have to have a, a room that's just for that. It's just that we have to designate which rooms we would use.
Right.
And I think it's better to have more than one so that you have availability of one happens to be in need.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think having the documentation and it being part of a standardized form, that way if anyone were to ever come in and question. We could say, you know, if it took the rent, that we'd be able to pull our form and say, well, the student was secluded in the classroom because the other students were removed. Any of those environments would meet that criteria and that they're safe, they're clean and they're able to be observed by an adult. Do we want to get that part changed and that reads more like that, that it's not gonna be, there'll be multiple designated areas or it could be classroom?
I think that's the difference between policy and procedure though, like the policy states, we have to do that and then we can have a procedure separate that's written that says which rooms they are and how they.
So everyone's, uh, we get the form, I'll bring the form in and we can add the form to.
Oh, that would work good. Yeah, cause this could, this policy could just refer to the form then, and the form would be procedure, not policy. I like that.
This sentence is such a touchy subject. I think we need to have it right.
And if I remember right, the last time we discussed this with, and Cal was here, um, it was pretty clear that this didn't have to be approved, like before school starts. We can get it approved and have it this part. And then as soon as you do approve it, it, it back dates, so.
You can do this one and then do a revision.
Well, this is the final though. We've already done.
Right, you can approve it and then you could go back and revise a policy. Now, I'm not sure, unless you table it. And then you could add a, add a form, you could even ask, uh, MTSBA, if they even have a form to go with the policy, but. You could then date your form or title your form, you know, po- policy thirty-three oh five F. So that you've got the form that goes along with your policy.
That's good.
And we've got that in other instances of a policy.
And I don't have a strong opinion whether or not we approve this now, table it or.
I'm fine.
We advise it. I think I'm good either way too.
Yeah.
So we're gonna prove it and then we'll just, you will sort of.
Form to go with it.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve policy thirty-three oh five and then we're gonna make a form that goes with this policy thirty-three oh five.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Hi.
Now, discipline risk assessments. The next one is disciplined risk assessments.
That's another one. So do we have a risk assessment team? A counselor would be part of this team. You really want, so the, the team.
Excuse me.
In my previous experience with the risk assessment, it's various depending on the student. You want a team who is familiar with the student because you are addressing a particular situation. What is consistent is. How the assessment is done. Do we have direction on the steps to take for risk assessment?
So in our, in the, um, emergency manual, there are some steps within that, but also, um. So the team that's in place right now would be those of us who receive the BARK information. So the BARK, uh, system is constantly monitoring our students. Um, on, whenever they're on electronic, when they're online or they're on our devices. And whenever they're using anything through the West Valley domain, then that comes to the IT person, the counselors, the administrators and the superintendent. And so that would be that, that's basically that risk assessment. We're looking at that, reading and then making it a determination. You know, I've read something late at night before that a student had suicidal ideation and called a parent, you know, in the middle of the night, basically. Um, over this, and I have to make that assessment in that moment about the risk for this student and make a determination. When it's within an IEP situation, then you have the caseworkers also on that. Maybe something that happened during the day. You would include the caseworker on that. The situations where we have that same team, counselors, administrators, and we've called the parents. In to join that team because we had an event during the school day and the child's at risk. So I guess it starts with that negative administrators, counselors. It's.
And it's kind of a, a triage response depending on the student and the risk. So like the example you used, came across a student having suicidal. So like the example you used came across a student having suicidal ideations. You call, you've addressed it. That's as far as it needs to go. A more extreme situation, you have a student or maybe they bring a weapon to school and they threaten someone with it. Well, then there that would be a higher level risk and you would have a greater level as far as the team response to it. So.
Like I've called the SRO before, someone made a threat against one of our students over social media. And I called the SRO at the high school about it and then let more people, you know. Like you say, it's a triage thing like who who needs to know basis. If if you know, I know Evergreen has had somewhere they've had to involve local law enforcement. And team gets a little bigger, right? Depends on.
I think what is important about this policy is the requirement to report. There have been so many incidences where things have happened with students at schools. And after the fact, people have said, oh, he told someone this or she told someone that. And there were people who knew that there was some type of risk there and did not respond to it. This is requiring a response to it all risk.
You teach students on this, the see some, see something, say something or think if you know it or you see it, just say something. Is how I've seen this enacted in the schools that to report and document that notifications and parents think.
Teams have been brought in to assist students. And it 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 varies from district to district and resources that are available. And that is something that we would just have to look at as far as what our team determines. You're not just at the school but as a community because it could mean a referral to like impatient type care.
All right. So as written, do we think this is okay?
Doesn't say it may establish. So it doesn't mean that they necessarily have to have like, like they can establish that team. I guess I read it as once there's a risk posed. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so I read it. We've already got a risk assessment team under this BARK system.
Well, it's just how we, who, you know, especially in a small district like this that we have a core group of people. And it says here, you know, that you may establish a committee charged oversight of the risk assessment teams. The superintendent might, I I I think that it it allows a lot of movement if we needed to. If something serious were to happen, it lets you form that team, lets Dr. Richard form it and and gather who she needs to and then to doc, make sure that we document that, what what we've done on the, you know, on behalf of that staff member, that student, parent, community member.
Right. It's part of having already relationships established with the Yellowstone Boys and Girls Group, the school counselors. So that if there is a situation that arises with a student, you have someone to call pretty much immediately and say, hey, we have this student who is making these types of threats or saying these types of things. And then they come in and provide the assistance.
Who do we have? Who do we go to now? Say somebody, say we had somebody come in, kid comes in with the gun and and we feel these threatened, another student or certain the teacher, who do we go to with that?
Law enforcement.
That one there is straight to law enforcement.
Yeah.
As I would be talking to my supervisor. The piece that I think that has an action that would be an action for us would be where it says, all district employees, volunteers and contractors are required to report any express risks or behavior that may represent that risk to the community, school or self. You know, I've I've had people come to me and say, I'm not really sure if I should, you know, tell you. I mean, this really takes that without a doubt. If you believe that something's there, you should be reporting. I think that that's would be the message, just like we're mandatory reporters for other things.
It's sort of puts it in the same realm as if you witness child abuse. I mean, if you think it's his kid that's been abused, this is about the same category.
Sure.
Witness something you think is.
And and don't be shy about it. If you think that's there, don't worry, give it to the people and and know, let someone else who can help carry that and make that decision, right? Don't sit with it and think, do we contact or do we not put it with, you know, larger team, talk to Dr. Richard, report it to administrator or counselor. And then let that team make a decision. I think it helps not having an individual sit with that and then documenting that. What did you do?
I think this policy actually will be helpful for teachers to be able to feel comfortable to do it too. I think there's always like you said, the question, should I or am I stepping in a family's business that I don't need to be stepping in? But honestly, this gives them the.
It becomes a procedure, like you talked about the difference, policy become a procedure.
Becomes a basically an okay to just do the right thing and step forward and say something, so.
So do you know how many in that in our school, like you're comfortable with calling say a parent in the middle of the night and saying, I just, I just came across this information that your student is looking at suicide. Okay, I mentioned suicide, whatever, went on the internet was looking it up, whatever. How many people in our school right now are felt that, you know, are would feel comfortable doing that or are obligated to do it?
They would contact, they generally would contact the counselor. If this happened to you, would contact me or the counselor and say, hey, I ran across this. If she felt it was like right now, an employee would make that if they had access. Most employees don't have access just to any student's information, like to contact those parents.
That's true.
So so that it already occurs. They they contact us and let us know, I saw this or they wrote this in their journal and then asked the group to think about, you know, what, what should we do with that? And usually the counselor, I will take that from there. No, we don't. But but just having awareness to to say, just, I think it's about awareness.
Yeah, absolutely.
In these cases, you report air on the side of bringing it out to the, bringing it into the light. Let the people that can help deal with it, deal with it and just bring it to light.
So teachers, when you do your training sessions, you know, for these new teachers coming in, we've got a bunch of them coming in again. So you'll be, you at that point, then you will give them the right tools to talk to you.
Yeah, I would add that into my mandatory reporting talk.
Sure.
Okay, this type of thing also has to be reported not to that state level, but to the local level. You would you would contact depending on that immediacy, like what the level of it.
Sure.
Do you go? You know, I think there's some things people go straight to Dr. Richard because this is going to take a big response. This needs a bigger, you know.
An immediate me.
I had a child leave con- leave leave the campus. And I had to make a decision, call the parents, call the police. And later on, they were like, how do you know to do that? Well, we did a search here. I've only got so much time. Someone's meant, you know what I mean? We you were trained for that.
Yeah, I think this brings that, like you said, the awareness, but also the empowerment to people to speak up.
Well, the other thing this this policy does too is it puts responsibility on the staff member. So if something were to happen and it were to come out later that a teacher knew about it and didn't bring it to an administrator. This protects the district as well by putting that responsibility on the staff member to have reported it. And because there are situations where people think, oh, I don't want to violate this child's confidence. They they trust me. They're just the team. They're just, you know, they just need someone to talk to. And then maybe they don't report it and something happens. It. So it it kind of it goes both ways.
But I think it also protects teachers though too, because when you have a policy in place, then as a teacher, you know, well, I have to do that. It is not just my personal, what do I think is right? And so I think as a teacher, I like to have policies in place where I knew what to do.
You seem safe lives.
Okay.
My wife and I saw a child say something on social media once and went to their parents and it was like changing for the whole family. So it's it's worth that. Speak up. I like that.
Hey. So I guess what we're we need to okay, these this policy.
We'll make a motion to approve policy thirty three ten P one, student discipline risk assessment.
I'll second that.
Okay, no more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Okay, so we've got that one. The last one, policy seventy six twenty five, use of enhanced tax credit receipts.
And I think this was the new policy that came out of the new tax thing that happened in the state. Where basically only a few rich people got tax breaks and everybody else did, but.
Is this the one that they could, there was only a certain amount that was allowed across the state. You had to get on on your phone, you had to get on your phone or submit at a certain time. And only certain people got to make, there was only an amount that could be donated across the state. And they got to specify which districts they wanted it to go to and went like that.
That was so.
And I think it was like a total of two million.
Two million dollars.
Person could do a max of two hundred and or two hundred and fifty and it was like gone within like twelve people.
Few donors gave it to like seven districts or something and it was gone like that. Yeah, but it just means that if you did get it, you would accept it and you'd only use it for these things.
Right.
This is how we made the donor list.
Yeah. Yeah, this policy clarifies where it can go and how it's documented, so.
But it still is ridiculous.
We're just hoping that somebody donates hundreds of thousands of dollars to our school sometime and gets on that. Yeah, this clarifies what we can do with it.
It is up to to increase the amount, but because it went so fast. Okay, so do we want to address this somebody?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we don't, then it puts us at liability of using those funds inappropriately. So motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
I'm.
Opposed. Okay, consideration of meet and greet with new superintendent. What do you think? We talked about getting that. PTO involved.
Yes, we did talk about that. I know the PTO at their last meeting before the end of the school year was talking about doing like a fall like game night with like bingo and take walks and different stuff and food trucks. I don't know if we wanted to try to put it together with that. Where it's not as like a formal.
The other opportunity would be maybe the open house in September. As we said, an open house date, we often do it in September.
That's right, something like that.
Be October. I was trying to think of a time when we have everybody.
Do we have, we usually have an open house, right?
We do and we usually set that date when we meet with Dr. Richard. So at our first meetings with Dr. Richard, we usually set an open house because then all the athletic schedules and everything else would be set and.
That's good opportunity. I I feel that's good.
I think they're still going to do that too, but I think it might be more farther into October. So you may be better off to do more of that.
Well, and if we bring back the carnival, we could put you in the water dump.
See, I said that.
Yeah, and we could, we could ask you a question and then if you don't answer, we're going to throw the ball.
As long as I'm the only one being dumped, I don't want to be.
Kidding.
I tried hard. Funny, have the idea to maybe make the open house fun and do the open house with the PTO's event and have 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 the opportunity to.
Well, I think that gives up to the right.
Middle school roundup is so much like an open house anyway that it seems kind of repetitive. Once the kids and parents have usually been in already, but it's different in elementary. So they might want more of the formal open house.
And some of the grade levels do little.
But it'd be fun, but.
Yeah, I mean, originally I was kind of, you know, whenever I had first seen this was just thinking that would be nice to kind of put those together and not have it so like formal, like have it like, you know, more where families can come and.
It is, yeah, difficult now with parking that we can't fit. You have to make it a true open house where things are happening. You're welcome to come from this hour to that hour. That we repeat things within the hour because there's not enough parking to bring elementary and middle school together. They're leaving two grade levels at a time.
Yeah.
At this point.
So would we be better off to do like an elementary open house then?
I just, I just think making, make sure that we make it open for like three hours so that parents can come and go.
Okay.
It had, that's what we found alleviates that problem because we also might have parents, you know, we have families with a child in almost every grade level or they've gone four here, you know. So I I think as long as you make it it like three hours or two to three hours, you thought.
I think we, maybe we discuss the schedule, you and Richard and I and see what we want to do as far as the open house goes and then anchor from there. Parts and event and September.
Right. And and I know that.
And maybe touch base with Tessa who's on the PTO and because I don't remember exactly what date they had picked. I felt like it was more October.
Also, Terry will be putting on a fall math night. So there'll also be a fall math night with games and things for parents. So so I think if we could get on like with everybody schedule wise, just so things are spread out a little bit. So we can talk about that and then make a determination of that would be one or separate or forgotten.
Well, and I prefer coordinated events because I felt like otherwise it becomes a drain on families. But then, oh, we have to go to the school this week for open house. No, we'll come to the school next week because the PTO is doing a thing. I think it's it's nicer when the organizations within the school can collaborate and do one bigger event and we get more people that way because it's not, it's not such a drain than everything else outside of school that families have going on. So we'll start with looking at open house dates and how to set that up so that there is a rotation that parking is done as well as possible. We all said we had our bus with your shuttle. And but we'll we'll get that together and have a date and break back to the board.
This is mainly on the action items because if all of us board members were there, then it would definitely.
So we could talk about it, yeah.
Classified.
Do we have to vote on it?
I don't, I don't think we have. Just it's just a consideration of of the meet and greet.
We could just make a motion that they're going to talk about it and get.
Let's do it. Let's be safe. Go ahead and make the motion if you want, but that's that we're going to. What?
Okay, so just make a motion that they are gonna Dr. Richard, staff, admin are going to be on figuring dates out for open houses and coordinating with PTO.
Sorry. Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Let's do, let's be safe then. Sorry. Okay, all all in favor? Opposed. Okay, now. The information items, May and June cash reconciliation. May, I think these are what we have in front of us.
That one's now. Good job.
Same there.
And I'm trying to figure out which would be the best report because I know Jeff had mentioned he wants a budget versus expenditures. I tried to pull it up today. It was a hundred and sixty pages long for June and July. So I'm trying to find probably the best one. So it might take a couple of tries, but I figured once we get this year's budget going, probably like September, then we'll, I'll be able to kind of.
I think he had that. The concern that he talked about there was for this budget meeting, the next one. And he he wanted to see what prior years budgets look like when we go to consider this year's budget. Because being all of us, you know, being so new, he thought he'd like to see budgets from prior years.
And I think.
And I don't know, they need to be extremely detailed just so that we have some idea where we've been versus where we're going to go.
Well, and Cecilia and I visited about that and all those budgets are in May fairs on OPI. And so those can be pulled up and looked at and then.
And so those can be pulled up and looked at, and now there are your approved budgets that the board's approved. And you could go back several years and take a look at them. And then the budget that she's building moving forward is what the state allows you to do as highest budget without a vote. Because you did not have a levy election this year to increase your levy. And so you'll adopt highest budget without a vote, and then you'll take over base monies on there, which would be your tuition money. That you collect for, for students that are coming here out of district. And you can put a certain amount in your general fund, and if you draw more than that, the difference can be put in your miscellaneous one-on-five. And you don't have to, excuse me, to determine that amount at this point. But what she's gonna be presenting to you next week will be what the budget as a whole, you will be approving. Um, on the OPI website through May fairs, and that will be submitted to OPI. And it will show your general, it's gonna have general fund, retirement, tuition. It will have transportation, adult ed, building reserve, bus depreciation. I mean, it's, it's gonna have everything in there as to how then she will be building a budget moving forward. But what you'll basically be approving next week is what your bottom line maximum budget is. And how many mills may or may not be going to fund those budgets.
So we're not gonna have like specific line items for each budgeted item, that's really just gonna be that end line, okay?
Yeah, you're gonna, it's gonna show you what you're gonna receive for, you know, your tax money. Basically, what you've got in there for your approved levies, which I wanna say it's three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three seventy-two, that's been there forever. It's, but it's gonna show you what your base amount is, what your over base amounts, and so on and so forth that you're gonna get. Including special ed money, what your related services block grants are. All of those things, your, it's your revenues that, that are gonna fund it. But then she'll put together that budget within her Black Mountain software then. But it isn't something in Black Mountain that you're gonna be approving all the time. Or the board doesn't necessarily approve the line items that are within there. And so those budgets are built primarily, you're gonna, you're gonna have to fund your people. And so at this point, it's salaries and benefits is what you're gonna look at first when she's doing her line items. And then she's gonna look at what is gonna cost her, your maintenance. For keeping the building going, for your utilities, and then you're gonna just trickle down from there. What's been discussed between the admin team on any in services, purchases, that type of thing. But your big one at this point is your salaries and benefits.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you could pull the last, like even year or two years, just so that we can see that. Or even if we have down the screen in here and have it up, I think that's what Jeff was wanting to see.
Is that really a function of seeing what the state allowed, what revenues are coming in, and then they're allotted to their different categories? Like you're receiving, you're agreeing that this is the received amount that we will across the ten payments or whatever across the next year.
You're gonna be, you're gonna have that for what the state's gonna, gonna give you, but it's gonna show in a total line item what's coming in for that budget. But yes, it comes in roughly in ten.
In ten payments across the year, so you're seeing what, what you are allowed from the state without having run a levy, you're seeing the amount. As a whole, and then you're seeing the set areas that those are funded to. There's not a lot of room for shifting when ninety-seven percent goes to people.
Right.
So that.
Yeah.
How do they get to May fairs? Do they have that through the MTS?
You can go, you can go into OPI. And you can get in and look in a public area budgets for West Valley School through OPI. And Cecilia could give you that link.
Yeah, or you could even go into like the. Meeting agendas from previous years and look at the budget that was approved too.
Yeah.
But May fairs, it is all right there and just, and I can.
You could go back.
And just want to.
August, every year for the last five years, if you wanted to. Cause we always do our budget meetings in August.
Is it also on the county site?
The county may have those.
County website.
They may, would have just as your bottom line amount, they're not gonna have the other info in that.
I know the other thing Jeff could ask too was just like on like a monthly basis to have it to compare like budget wise, like where we are. And those line items like more on like a quarterly or monthly type basis throughout the year.
That was the one that I tried to pull today and it was the hundred and sixty pages or whatever it was, so I have to find the right.
So maybe don't be, so we can note a specific or something on it.
Yeah, so over the next couple of months, I'll pick and choose and see how it works, and then maybe next month I'll have to try a different one because that one wasn't, you know, so. And all of this money is going to the county, correct? And the county disperses it through the county superintendent or most of it?
Um, you've got.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's deposited into the county treasurer's account. And then, you know, we pay our bills and our payrolls all through the county account. So they're just like.
And then we tell them on a monthly basis what our claims are, what our payroll is, and then they disperse money out to pay those warrants. The other, the other thing that is important when you're looking at those is looking what your reserves are. In those, in those different funds, because the goal is, and. With your general fund especially, is that you want to be able to have your reserves at maximum reserves if you can. And number one, because if you've got claims in the summer that you're paying. You need to be have, able to have enough money sitting there in the bank, basically, pay your bills. And so that's where your reserves come in, because you haven't, she's closed out last year's budget on June thirty. The New Year's budget has not been approved yet, even though we know that there's money coming in. But you've got your reserves sitting there to pay in your July and August bills, basically. Okay, and so for districts that don't have appropriate reserves. They have to go to the county and then they go through a warrant process. And years and years and years ago, I remember Gary Krueger told me about it, that they had, they had that where we didn't have the reserves. And, but it was eons ago. But we have built those reserves up where we've had them at max or darn near max. And when we did our last bond issue, that was something that Standard and Poor's really wanted. Was for us to be able to keep those reserves at maximum to get that A plus rating on our bonds.
And you're borrowing, borrowing off of them, shifting those funds to use in the summertime, putting them back in the reserve when the money comes from the county for July. Pretty much, because you had the money yourself to cover and you didn't have to go to warrant in order to get the money, but you put the money back when the funds come in. And Standard and Poor's gave us a rating on the bond.
Yeah, it was an A plus rating. Yeah, so, and you're gonna be looking at, she'll have all the other funds there and laid out. As far as your permissive levies, what your mills are gonna be, what it's gonna take to fund those. What you may be able to have to maximize your reserves, if you've got any money over those reserves. You could reappropriate that into the next year that would help with some of your, some of your mills, so you wouldn't have to have as many mills. So. It's a fun process. Glad you're here Cindy to teach us all about it. Well, I don't know, I told her I'm happy to help with anything, but yeah. If that Black Mountain software, you can keep. I hate that stuff.
Also, I'm like, it might take a few months to work out the reports because they're still, yeah, we'll see.
Now, we, we bought into that Black Mountain stuff because of Serena, right? So, so what, keeping us from going back.
Oh, you, at this point, you would wanna go.
Almost every school uses it.
Yeah.
I think Calispo and Colley Falls and Evergreen maybe don't, but everybody else across the state, it's.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
It's accepted.
It's costing you more, but it is something you're gonna be going, you're gonna be, as you grow and you have multiple buildings. It's gonna prove beneficial for you. I would never gone with it because I was so used to what I had and I could make it do what I wanted it to do.
It's cool to street five, that's a goal.
No.
Even though they're.
My fingers off my old Mac, she was very proficient in hers and inefficient and good at it, but there's been, I think the newer program does have benefits.
Black Mountain, it, it, it's complicated though, and you don't get, in my mind, an opinion. You don't get the personal service that we used to get when we were with the other program. I could talk to that programmer on a Friday and he would spend the weekend and get me the report I wanted by Monday. And so, but Black Mountain is, is just something that a person needs to get used to and to be able to figure it out. And to move forward with, and there's a lot of people that can, that can help. But it is, it's just more expensive.
I would, we got it anyway, so we dealt with that, I mean, that's not anything we're gonna be considered here. Okay, now, and the support has been good, like if I send an email, I mean, I usually get a call back within an hour. I mean, if it's Serena, fifteen minutes or, you know, but, so.
Okay, so I, we, so we got. These, these information items.
So the secure education.
We, we, I think they already have that out.
Yeah, we have that.
Handle that, the guide to effective school board meetings.
I have that linked, but I also, I like. And I'm reading though. I printed job copies of that as well. And this is just a resource that was available on the MTSVA website. It's presented in kind of a Q and A format, which I think was helpful because you can go through, you don't have to read the whole document. You could go through and read just the questions, and if there's something that you're like, oh, this is a question I have, then you can read the answer instead of going through the whole thing.
Choose your own, that's for sure. Okay, thank you very much for that.
And I think, well, I just wanted to, I've read it, and I've read it before too, but I think the one, question thirty-one is something that we wanna maybe consider moving forward with our board. It's just the timeframe of allowing community members to speak within a board meeting. And I think there's been a precedent set prior to now anyway, by a previous board chair, that people are only allowed two minutes no matter what. And I think that provision is only there, there's, I mean, the intent of the limitation is if there's an overwhelming number of people that attend our board meeting and wanna speak. It's like, okay, we have to do something reasonable to get through everybody, right? And this says like two to five minutes, but I think what we need to get to in our board is allowing people to speak. Let them know to be as efficient as possible, and if, if there's like multiple people here, maybe consider limitations. But there's always been this like two minute timer, you're done, cut off.
Three.
But we, I think we need to get away from that, I think we need to allow people to speak unless there's enough people here. And then we have to do a reasonable thing to, to, to maybe limit them to some degree. But I, I wanna get away from a timer situation and cutting people off and having the community feel like they just can't talk when they're here.
And that's always a decision.
But in general, there's not, there's not a policy, there's not a set in stone thing, I think, just as a, as a. Group of board members, I think we just need to come up with something that we feel is reasonable.
History with that, sorry if I'm talking a little much, but I had eighteen years here. Is that we, we came up with a number and it was a recommendation from MTSVA. And so we would try to hold with that, same thing with you don't change your location of a meeting, you stay consistent. If you're having a meeting in a closet, you keep it there. If you're having your meetings in here, you keep it here, you don't move to the gym. To stay consistent and to, to. Be able to, for the board, to keep a meeting going smoothly and conduct the board's business. And so that was just kind of the background of why, why we went with that for so many years. But we had years where it was only staff that were here.
Never public comment, right?
You know, we just didn't. We may, we may have three staff members and some admin.
Would you be posting it ahead of time? So we don't get to choose, you, you know, as, or something to consider from some of the ones I've sat through and seen. Are you gonna make that determination in the moment, how long you're gonna let them talk, or whether, whether you like what's being said or not? Or if it's unlimited and you don't have a limit, and then now you've cut somebody off and you never had a limit before, and now you've cut somebody off?
When I think in all fairness, we should probably come up with a gradient system, like if there's less than five people, they can speak. And just be reminded to be efficient, if there's five to ten people, we'll set it, you know, at four minutes or five minutes or whatever the case may be. And if it's greater than ten, which we've, we've had, maybe it is the, the three minutes. But I think as long as it's set ahead of time, then it's fair and it's not like we're picking on one person or another. But I think what has happened is there's been meetings where there's only been one or two people speak, and then they've had their timer go off and they're cut off, and it's like, okay.
But, but, I mean, but why should they speak any longer than? People that are, a lot of people at board meetings should get as much time as a person who just comes to, is, is just lucky enough to be the board meeting when there's only five other people there. They get to speak for twenty minutes when the next person only gets to speak for five, because they happen to choose a meeting where there were a bunch of people there. I, I, I think, I think we need to set it, I, maybe three is what we've done, maybe five is.
It's been two and it has not been appropriate, I think our community members are mapped.
I do think we gotta keep it consistent, cause I think you're opening a whole can of worms if we don't keep it consistent. I think you gotta be like, whether that number's three or four, whatever that number is, I just, I think you gotta keep it consistent.
What about increasing it to five minutes? That's double on the amount of time that anybody can have. And I mean, if we've got forty people out there or two people out there, five minutes, I mean, we're already, but we're a little on a wind to change.
All of us.
But five, five minutes is quite a while, really, for somebody, if they, if they've got their act together. They should be able to say what they need to say in five, that's twice as long as we're giving them now. So, and, and that's recommended here, anywhere from two to five, so we'll go with the five, what do you think?
I think we have to put it on as an action item, I don't think we can do anything tonight.
No, we can't set it in stone, and actually, I don't even know if it's something that requires an action to, to do, because it's not necessarily a policy. This is just a reasonable, reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, I guess.
So I think it's just something we wanna come up with as a board, as a kind of a consensus kind of a thing moving forward, so it's, it's. But I think what has happened is, is we've had a lot of community members who feel like they haven't been heard. And I think I wanna get away with, get away from that as a board, I want people to feel like they can say the things that they wanna say. And I think in general, people don't wanna stand up there for ten to twenty minutes either, I think they wanna just be able to finish their sentence and not get cut off.
I think like they feel like they're not being heard though, because nobody's followed up after the fact.
That was my next point, cause that's in here too.
Not engage with them during it and say. Hopefully Cindy would do it for us, yes, would follow up with them after the fact. I think that's where they feel like they're not being heard, is they're just, we need that extra step.
Yeah.
That is.
And that's another one of the questions in here, question and answers, it's just the follow-up to, I think having people. Being able to follow up with those individuals, and you don't have to respond during the meeting, and as a matter of fact, they recommend that you probably don't, but. Just having follow-up saying, we, we heard you, thank you for speaking and.
Question eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Speaks to that, how may the board respond to in course speaker's race during public comment period? It goes on, but ultimately, the end of that first paragraph, otherwise the board would request that the superintendent does a knee follow speaker to address those concerns. And, and past experience that has, I've seen that be very helpful with people coming to the school board with questions or concerns. And it is just that knowing that someone is gonna call and have a conversation. And I'm happy to do that, that's not a problem at all. And hopefully that would help with some of that community engagement.
And hopefully that would help with some of that community engagement and letting.
When I visited with Dr. She said, she mentioned that time, we're just visiting in one of our visits and she offered at that time. Just to, when somebody makes a public comment, to say, Dr. Wisher will follow up on that. I mean, that was her, that.
All comments, whether there's questions.
Because we talked about that, rather than just saying the thank you, the generic thank you, which it, nobody feels that's satisfying to anybody who's making a comment. And so she said, you know, but, but I was told, I couldn't say we will look into that. Because that implied the school board would look into it, when in fact, it should be Dr. Wisher who looks into it. And then she will bring information to us. So um, I bet she, she offered to do that. So is the board comfortable then going forward with five minutes? People get to talk for five minutes.
Five minutes is too long. I hate to say, but I think it's too long.
Well, it may be, but they don't have to use the full five minutes.
That's true.
If they, they can use three, but five, you're, you're right in some instances, but it might be.
I mean, because it also states in here, if you have a room full of people, so say you have forty people in here, that you can't just say ten people are gonna speak. Or five people are gonna speak, you have to let that whole room speak.
But they have to sign a mandatory.
Right, correct.
So it's not like they can just jump on that wagon at the last minute, which is helpful. I mean, so we just hope that anybody who signs up has some idea, a concise idea of what they want to say.
Law doesn't require them to sign up. I think the sign up is just to give. Board chair a reasonable.
It sounds like it's completely, it's actually up to you, Marilyn, is what it sounds like.
There's differences between obviously policies and what's actual state law, what people actually have the right to do. But I think in general, if we can make ourselves more available for the public and have them not only be able to speak. But also have them feel like we heard them and followed up with them is super important.
I think the follow up is gonna be key really in this, because that's where they feel like they just, once they have somebody following up. I, I don't think of the bigger issue on that time limit anyway.
Just sitting through enough board meetings, two minutes has not been enough. I don't think that it needs to be ten. I don't think it needs to be twenty, but um, somewhere in that. Fourish, threeish, fourish, fiveish, somewhere in there.
Five is, yeah.
Maybe double it and give them four right now, because it's been two.
Because we're gonna be set next, at the next meeting when we have people here, are we prepared to go four?
Sure, I'll sit here all night if people want to talk. That's just me personally, though. I know, I understand. Everybody has their own, own feelings on it. I'll give people two hours if they want to talk. I agree, I think.
Point, people, they, they need to state their case and then.
Yeah, the state law is that we have to allow them a reasonable amount of time. There is no set number to that. This is a consensus from the MTSVA that somewhere between two and five is reasonable. But I think we have at least proven over the last couple of years that two minutes has not been enough time for certain individuals to feel like they've been heard. And I think, yeah, I think four is plenty.
It's twice.
Nobody wants to speak forever either.
Okay.
Maybe I do, but.
And then we'll do the follow up, just respond with that, that.
I love it.
We're sure, we'll follow up.
We'll be following up with you and we'll be speaking to you, we'll be contacting you, whatever. Thank you for your comment, Dr. Wisher will be in contact. And then maybe it'll be your job to try and find their address and phone number. You know, and then you do, but their name, that's where the signup sheet. That's where the signup sheet comes in, because if they speak at that public comment, they need to have signed in and put there.
And maybe it could say on there, you know, if you would like to follow up, please list the phone number.
Let's do that.
I like that.
Because maybe some people don't, I mean, need the follow up, they just want to say.
Well, and then you're able to follow up, gain more information, because sometimes people won't say, when they have a limit, they don't have the means to actually tell us everything. And then you can determine whether it's something that we as a board need to be presented and discuss and, and action item if, if necessary. And that will allow it to actually.
It could be a privacy issue.
It could afterwards, if they came to the clerk and you recorded it for Dr. Wisher or something, but I, a lot of people are not gonna put their phone number on a, a sheet for everybody else to see.
And I think what we could just say is, if you want, would like us to follow up, if you please um, leave your contact information to her before you.
I would imagine are probably families. They're in the, the student management system anyhow. I can look them up that way. If not, if they're not within our student data system, then I can just ask for information.
Well, and leave it on them to, I, I like the idea of leaving it on them to actually approach you and give the information. Because then we can just say that if you would like follow up on this or further addressing of this, please leave your contact information with, with you. And yeah, that leaves it to them to actually make the steps over to do it and not just assume that somebody's gonna do it.
Okay, so now, when people make a comment, I say to them. Thank you for your comment. If you would like Dr. Wisher to follow up on us, please contact her after the meeting with your address.
Or I think when we open it up for a public comment, you could just make that brief statement at the beginning. That way you don't have to say it ten times.
So we say at the beginning of the comment period, any comments being made here, Dr. Wisher will follow up on them. If you, if you would get her your contact information.
That's reasonable.
How about that? Right? The end of that, the one thing we talked about.
How do you think though, they're gonna feel that you've already decided a response to, like, should you wait till the end?
Oh, we can do that too after. Thank you for all your comments. If anybody would like further follow up or would like to. Yeah, like the feeling of that sounds better.
We're gonna have to, at the beginning, we're gonna have to say it's now five minutes. Or four minutes. We're gonna have to say that. I'd like, I guess I'd like to put all the cards on the table at the beginning, my public comment period and say. You now have four minutes to make public, if, if, if you do, will. You know, if you'd like, we will refer, or you can, I, whatever.
It's consistent and predictable. And regardless of whether it's said at the beginning or the end, if it's said at every meeting.
And it will be.
This is gonna be the behavior that happens.
And then I think they'll really appreciate that we're hearing them, we're listening and we care.
I think it's a good time to be doing it. We got new board members, we've got new Doc, Dr. Wisher. And I think it's a good time to just make these changes at the very beginning and it's, according to the law, according to this, we can do it. And we'll see what happens as far as the five minutes. If the four minute gets to be overwhelming, we'll go back to two.
I think that's plenty of time. I think honestly, people, people are very respectful. They understand that. We don't want to be here forever, but.
Yeah, but they.
The whole timer going off thing at two minutes was, I think it was.
To go up at four, Justin.
Yeah, but. Two was, two, two was, it was apparent that two wasn't enough. Yeah.
But I think we're still gonna have to have a timer for four, just because it's only fair thing to do. Otherwise, people, almost they go to half a minute more than I.
I've, maybe we could do something that doesn't have an alarm too, like some, one of us could actually just do a phone with a running edge. Just to let you know, we only have thirty seconds left. Perfect.
At the end, but I think you have to have some kind of noise though, because they just keep going and then you don't want to interrupt them too.
And rerun into that one.
I don't want to be the one to have to say, I mean, I just didn't have the bell telling me to be quiet as me.
Yeah, they can see it like that. I think that's perfect. Yeah, I think it was the surprise alarm that went off and nobody knew what time they had at this.
I mean, I think it's a great idea to get it by.
Anything else?
Anybody have anything else? Or do we add a motion? Somebody second, anybody?